An uphill battle. When my children enter the schools, they immediately feel as if they belong and are included. Because simply because the majority of our teachers and paras are Caucasian. When adults speak like you and look like you, you feel a sense of comfort and acceptance. We do not have a strong number of Native American staff members. For this reason, I find it imperative that we strive to find connections and understanding with our Native American students. I can only speak for the elementary school.
My name is Morgan Kirkendall. I can only speak for the elementary school, but we work very hard to help our Native students feel included through academic drum group during recess, PE activities that include cultural ties and other Indian Ed curricular activities. Our high school students get to show this through their giveaways on senior night. I completely understand that this may take 40 minutes or more away from the bands that want to watch basketball. However, our education in this district does not remain between eight to four. When we bring education into our basketball games, we are not only allowing our students to feel validated and included, but we are educating the general public. Also, this is not a captive audience as people are free to leave if they please. Our students spend hours upon hours in our buildings. They spend a profound amount of time on our buses running back and forth for their education. The least we can do is allow them time to acknowledge the teachers, coaches, employees, and community members that have had a powerful impact on their lives thus far. I believe it is crucial we recognize that the honoring students are student driven. These students are requesting to honor and acknowledge people that have had a significant impact on their education. We as a district are not asking them to do it. They truly want to share their culture with us and for us to be an active part of something that is so special to them is huge. It honestly breaks my heart that we would ever consider shutting students down, downplaying who they are or where they came from, or even making them feel as if they are insignificant. Our jobs as educators is to empower our students. I do understand perhaps placing parameters around the allotted time or the speaker, but I do strongly believe that this is a tradition that our school needs to hold on to. This is not solely tied to our Native students either. Any student should be able to use this time to acknowledge those that have had an impact on them. If this is something that you worry about, I do believe this is one more reason why our district needs a homeschool liaison. This person could help us handle our powwow, senior nights, and so many other things through their position correctly without causing it to appear as a racial issue. This is a great topic that could go to our Native American parent and staff committee. We could work together to find common ground and create an experience that would be genuine, culturally sensitive, and create an appropriate guideline to help us all navigate through this. Our out-of-districts parents such as Nikki choose to send their children to school here. We know that our teachers go the extra mile to help ensure our students' success later on in life. Through the cultural act of giveaways and blanket honorings, our Native students are able to show that love and respect for their teachers, coaches, and community members that have made significant impacts on their lives. I know as a teacher, I'm greatly humbled when I receive one of these honorings. I can only speak for myself, but it also gives me an extra push to remind me as to why I'm an educator when at times it's so hard to keep going in today's education system. I've witnessed several of you on the board being recognized by our students through giveaways, blanket honorings, and other culturally significant activities. In Indian culture, they honor those that have greatly impacted their lives through gift giving. As a non-Native person, Nikki is raising her own children to be aware and conscientious of the cultures around them. I appreciate how our school provides.
I'm Tara Lyon. Our school provides our children with opportunities such as the powwow to experience other cultures and to see their friends and classmates, find pride and honor in showcasing what they can do with their culture while still providing a safe and welcoming environment for non-Native students at the same time. At the elementary level, students of all cultures and races love to drum and dance at the powwow. And what a great place for them to get to freely try this without being judged or shamed. I love when I see non-Native kids singing, drumming, and dancing, and I know the other Native parents that attend love seeing it too. I do not believe it was the intent of the board to create racial tension. I do believe that through collaboration with faculty and the community, we can work through this and find a compromise that would benefit our student body as a whole. My fear is once we start taking one thing away, we will make it easier to justify removing other things from our school as well. I think it is important we continue to have our powwows and other Native American activities. We encourage everyone to share their culture with us in our district. We love to have new things to teach our students. So I encourage families to volunteer and bring your knowledge to us, just as many Native people have done for us in the past. I want to thank Lynette Tubols, Crystal Tubols, Velma Fisher, Jeremy Highwalker, Pascal Shoulderblade, Sierra Sisti, Rose Realberg, Lori Newmiller, Bill Newmiller, Cindy Hatton, Sidney Fox, Ryan Moline, Scott Studener, and the late Jenny Parker, and the many other people who have voluntarily entered our school to share their culture and knowledge. Thank you.
My name is Deanna Egan, and I learned days, if not weeks, after the fact that my minor son required a police desk or without my knowledge or permission to be questioned by administrators about information on a meeting between adults and minors at Colstrip High School that I had been issued a cease and desist letter by administrator in response to my efforts to disclose very concerning facts that Colstrip Public Schools has denied due process and following the chain of command to address concerning facts. I am issued a cease and desist letter while my minor son is questioned on the same information. How is that possible? How does that make sense? Policy 2132 is violated the first time dealing with this information when a meeting was called on January 7, 2025, that involved three adults and minor children in the group. The information was personally sensitive enough that parents should have been made aware of it and they should have been passed permission. That is policy in our school. It's also an MC code. Parents were not notified nor was permission given. Moreover, the question about the likelihood of this meeting taking place, an administrator denied that it was going to take place, but in fact it did take place. That is also a violation of policy 2132. Further, information was shared in this meeting that was manipulated to support a narrative that contradicted the facts that I was trying to provide to school. And they were presented in a way to influence minor children to fail to take precautions that children should be encouraged to take when dealing with strangers. Stranger danger is a term coined for a reason. Boy Scouts teaches it, Elementary Ed teaches it. It is very important that minor children are taught to research strangers, especially ones they're unfamiliar with in a school setting. I've been a teacher and a coach, and I have been involved in numerous situations where teachers or coaches needed to be removed. Students must be made aware. For an adult to reprimand children from doing their due diligence is very concerning. It is now March 12, 2025, and I have yet to be allowed due process to deal with this fact that took place in our school and is unexplainable. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other correspondence or public participation? Okay. With that, we'll move on. 501 consent agenda.
I move the Colstrip Public Schools approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Motion second. Any public participation on this? Any board? That, Wade?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Angie?
Aye.
Sabrina?
Aye.
With that, we'll move into 6.01. Mr. Bush?
Good evening, Chris. If you can pull that workbook up tonight. So the follow-up to, I believe it was the January board meeting, when we were selected, went and did a walkthrough of the school district, put together a workbook. This workbook, I think, we forwarded to the board. But what I'm seeking tonight is again some input and making sure that some of my assumptions and clarification, so if you could hit tab 4.2 at the bottom. So what I've done is I created a list of the information, and then I gave it like a color coding of importance. So a red, yellow, and green. So items that I thought are red are pretty imperative with regards to, if you scroll down on that worksheet at the bottom, I define red, yellow, and green with safety issues, immediate maintenance items, code compliance issues, educational community needs, and then priority five and six, which are what I would consider lower priorities, but equipment surface, life improvements, or deferred maintenance items. And so that's my color coding, and then that's my thought process associated with what I did. This is an interactive worksheet. So if you put an X over there in the column that says that you want to do it, then the totals add and sum to the bottom. So any items that have an X next to them, it totals that. If you want to remove that item, then that number off the bottom goes that way. So again, tonight, what I'm looking for, I put a number scheme together, you know, one, two, three, so one items, if you could scroll to the top, Krista. You know, items associated with the high school. So again, we have the Colstrip High School restroom renovation, we have the sports complex renovation, we have main switchgear replacement, gymnasium lighting, we have sidewalk and sectional replacement, we have pool locker rooms, we have parking lot pavements, auditorium seating and flooring. So those items are all at the high school. If you continue to go down, you'll see there the items number that begins with two. We start talking about Pineview Elementary School, where we have bus drop-off, employee parking, excuse me, employee parking, parent drop-off. We have Pineview motor control center replacement. We have playground drainage and equipment replacement. We have cafeteria increased functionality and security improvements. We have intercom improvements at Pineview. You go down to items with number three, we go into the middle school, where we have east, you know, we have parking improvements on the east lot at the middle school, window replacement on the northwest elevation, you know, the library clear story, which is the window replacement in that section where we've had some moisture damage. And I think the last one was the basketball court improvements. So again, those are the list of projects that I've reviewed. If you go to each one of the items on below, this is a workbook, so each one of those items kind of has their own tab where, you know, we're working off of some subcontractor quotes or where I've tried to define, you know, scope as clarified as what I know, is what I see. And so I'm asking for tonight again, some input or just saying, hey, Tyler, yes, this is in alignment with what we would like to continue to develop, or hey, we need to, you know, make a rudder correction and steer the ship in another direction. And any sort of input. I don't necessarily want to go through each specific item, but I think there are enough where I need a little bit more definition from you guys with regards to maybe some of the sports complex information, maybe looking at some of the parameters associated with, you know, the bathroom renovation with regards to some of the finishes, how exotic or how much do you want to go to with regards to wainscoting, tile definition, top of that. And I know that's finishes, but it helps me kind of make sure that we're in the same expectation, that it's not just a bare cinder block wall, or hey, I'm looking for floor tile, I'm looking for wall tile, half the wall is okay, no, it needs to go all the way up. You know, how many fixtures are we looking for? Are we looking for a specific number to meet a certain demand for, you know, our graduation or our basketball game? How many, you know, as long as we can fit those in there by code, or hey, we don't need 10 of those, we only need five, kind of the thing. So, and I, you know, go ahead.
I was going to say, when we met out there, you said you were going to go back and take a look and see what the ranges were. If you have 1,000, I mean, your capacity is 1,000, what's the requirement for bathrooms and things like that? Did you take a look at that to see kind of what would fit? And, you know, what, I guess, kind of configuration for where that bathroom?
So originally, when the school was built, it was designed for a capacity. You're nowhere near the design capacity associated with the number of stalls and restrooms that are there. What I've done with the space that's been allotted and the, you know, kind of the approach is I've maximized the number of fixtures, toilets, journals that I can do in the space provided that's code compliant. So that's kind of been my methodology. But overall, as far as, you know, building wide, you know, that was designed for a much larger capacity.
And I guess I was talking about more out at the football field.
Right. So that's, so which question is specific to the sports complex? So at the sports complex, if you could maybe go to that one, maybe blow up the existing plan, but that, what's that's there is the existing, you know, plans that were developed. So the existing capacity that's there. So there are 13 rows at 20 seats, and there are four banks, and I think the number, I think we came just under?
About 1,000, almost 1,000, wasn't it?
Yep. And so do you want to continue, do you want a like-for-like in saying, hey, everything that we would put in, we would match that existing capacity? Or would you want to say, hey, you know, due to current circumstances, maybe we designed it to be a little bit less as far as the capacity? Thoughts, I guess, considerations?
Yeah. So these, just so the board understands, so these are our sections where we could actually add on if we wanted to. If the enrollment spiked or whatever, we could actually add on to the ends and have, because they're freestanding. And so it's, as I understand it, am I thinking about that correctly?
Correct.
So even if we had the bathrooms on one end or whatever, we could add on another section of stadium seating on the other end. But if we want to go like-for-like, I mean, that's, I mean, 1,000 is, I don't know, I've seen it packed in there, so.
What's our current capacity?
About 1,000.
Okay.
So as that is done, we will become a player for district track and possibly divisional track. And so hosting those meets, we could very well support that next seating. So it's just something to keep in mind as to having us be a host site for those things.
Probably like-for-like though.
Yeah, with the ability to add on if we need to.
Okay, so what I heard was we need to match existing capacity, and we need to look at the number of restrooms associated with that capacity, specific to whatever is code compliant. I believe exterior venues are different than, you know, interior, obviously. But we'll look to develop those numbers and associated with the capacity that is existing.
Yeah. And so your numbers on this spreadsheet, on the first tab, reflect without a bathroom at all, but is that like-for-like in capacity? That 4.5, I believe, is what it was for that? Is that what it was?
Correct. That, I mean, that was a budget number that was with its base. And so the more specificity, the more, you know, owner project requirements that I can define, then we can narrow, we can get more specific with regards to pricing.
Right. And so the, I mean, just so we all know, the bathrooms would be out in addition to that. Because it wasn't part of that package.
And so, you know, we defined some expectations with regards to renovations of the concession stand, you know, and we tried, you know, we did that. Do we need to bring that, I mean, do we need to review those or expectations? It's not, you know, the concession stand structure remains as is. It's mainly an electrical capacity, and it's finishes within that. Okay? So there's no new concession stand, but it's utilizing the existing concession stand. The existing bleachers, you know, in the stadium seating, that's gone in its entirety. And that's replaced with an aluminum sectionized seating set, and then tucked underneath that will have to, you know, will be our restrooms. Either we'll put them on to the end, or we'll try to tuck them that's underneath them. Is that okay? I guess. Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Track. So inspected the surface of the track. The surface of the track is serviceable, okay? It's not, I was expecting and hearing a lot of communication, alligatoring and all this. The surface is okay. What the issue is, is that there are four, I think, or maybe six interior drains that are on the inside of the track. So over time, as those drains have taken water, there are some elevation changes in the surface of the track. The surface is fine, but it's, the issue is that it's lost elevation, it's lost as that water has gone through there. What would you like to replace that with? There are, you can mill down and reinforce and resurface. You can replace it in an entirety and go post-tension concrete. There is a vast spectrum.
What is that? Does that $4.5 million include?
That is, no.
Nothing with the track?
That is resurfacing of the track.
That is resurfacing of the track.
Again, this is Tyler's, you know, preliminary assessment and trying to like put numbers together. So as we define that, oh, you know, we're going to draft, we're going to change those dollars. So I know that, you know, we had DA Davidson on and saying, hey, if the list of projects that Tyler's put together is amenable, you know, we need to, you know, we still need to define some of those things. That numbers are going to change, but generally speaking, the cost to taxpayer, and, you know, she has all that information that's available, but this is my initial stepping out of the box, trying to define what your expectations are and the scope in order for you to start to say, okay, is that number okay? Hey, seems like we have a little bit more capacity, you know, maybe we can define that, you know, what are those impacts? So that's kind of what I'm seeking from the board is saying, hey, I put together some rough order of magnitude and defined some scope. Are we, are we okay? I mean, is there flexibility either way? Do we need to rein this in? That's what I'm seeking.
Right. And I would recommend a mill and overlay because then you can build those points of, you know, the drainage points up and then overlay one overlay around the entire track after we get done with doing the football fields. And so you go in, demo the football field, reconstruct like we had talked about a little bit, and then come back, go in and mill that whole thing and then overlay thicker where we've got those divots, and then overlay with one hole, overlay over the entire track, and then surface is what I would think.
Right. What we talked about was working our way out of the donut. So you want to work on the projects that are in the middle, finish the projects in the middle, finish the track, and then basically focus, so you're not working over finished product to go back and to re-crown the football field and adjust sprinkler heads and doing that. You don't want to do that last, you want to do that first, so then you can work your way out.
Right. And I just want to be clear, as we're talking about the surface of the track, we're talking about not the rubber on the top that has chunks of it missing and bald spots, but we're talking about the underneath surface where we have those bumps, which aren't necessarily a big deal if you're, you know, you or me out there jogging, but if you're a hurdler, a half-inch difference in that surface, it can blow out your knee.
And there are half-inch differences. I mean, it's, in my head, I had, I had that the track is totally deteriorating, but the issue is the subsurface drainage, and you have settlement around the drains, and so the track's surface is good, the tabletop is good, it's just that it's bogged.
So, okay, so what we would be doing is leveling that out. So you have a level.
So removal of the top rubber surface, removal of the asphalt, reinforcing those drains to alleviate that, and then coming back on it and finishing up.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear on that. So thank you.
And then the other, I guess, is that, and that's, I mean, totally understandable, the other option is, is you'd go down to subgrade, build back up, and go with a concrete track, and go with a situation where it's post-tension, where you have a thinner set of concrete, but you have bar that's going through that, that you put that under tension, so then you don't get the, you know, potential cracking in a surface.
That's just super expensive.
Correct.
Yeah. And like we talked about, I mean, this track has held up for 20-plus years, whatever. And so, you know.
That's what I like to see. The next track should be a 20-plus year track.
Yeah.
Right? That's what we're asking for. You know, that new floor in the gymnasium is supposed to be a 30-year floor, right? I think this needs to be.
Similar.
Similar.
Yeah. Plus, I mean, you go with asphalt, and it's easier to work with afterwards. I mean, you go with post-tension concrete, and you're tearing out sections if something goes wrong.
I'll find with the mill.
Okay?
Yep.
Okay. Bathrooms. How Gucci do you want your bathroom to be?
We don't need Gucci.
Durable, easy to clean.
Yep.
Especially if they can't go in there and destroy.
So hard surfaces, we don't want plastic wainscoting, we want tile. Is halfway up the wall okay? Does it need to be, does it need to go ceiling down?
I don't know, I've never cleaned it here. What do you guys recommend? Ceiling down?
What's the moral?
What is that?
The moral. Moral. And also what a baker's spray good to. I don't remember that one's got tile in it.
I mean, if you could take a hose in there and just spray it off, ideal.
Yes.
So maybe, yeah, ceiling down.
Because the idea is still to have the two, right? Like where the men's wains and women's are right now on that side of the, it's just going to be one women's bathroom, and the men's is going to be on the other side. Is that what we're doing?
No, this is.
This is in the sports complex.
Oh, still outside?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, outside, just as durable as we can make it.
Yep.
Inside, switching gears, leaving the sports competition at the high school. So what you just said was that it's opposite, so the men are closest to the gym, the women are closest to the cafeteria.
Hey, Steve. Robin has her hand raised.
Okay, I'll catch her. Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
That works.
Okay.
And we don't need too Gucci on that either.
Easy to clean.
Yes, durable. That's a durable word there, yeah. Things that don't attach from the wall.
Free-floating, yes.
Right.
Real quick, Robin, do you have something you need that?
I was just going to say the same thing. I think the tile to the ceiling would be great, but also if we can go back to the old school, like terrazzo top style sinks with the automatic waters, but the ones that go all the way to the floor, like nothing that's mounted to the wall. So if somebody sits on the edge of it, it doesn't come off. That would be great.
Okay. 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 Let's talk Pineview drop-off.
Talk to that, man.
Sure. Because I'm not sure exactly the plan that we landed on. I would actually prefer a remake of the entire entrance to the school. I don't know if it's a realistic expectation to drop our kinders off up at the bus barn and have them walk down to the school and all the monitoring that goes on with that and just the potential for mischief from other adults and/or kids. It's kind of a nightmare. If we could figure out something that made sense for a bus drop and a student drop in front of the school would be the best thing.
I agree with that.
So.
We want to look at, I think we want to look at something that's going to sustain our schools, especially since we're going after such a big bond. And this is something that, for the safety of the kids, we need to really look at.
I'm okay with that. What I want is less interaction with vehicles and buses.
Exactly. Yep.
We can't have that 100 cars parked out there at 2:30 when we're still trying to get buses in there.
Plus, having kids that are just walkers.
Right.
Zipping in and out of that as well. And that's, yeah.
So that might be something we might.
Right. So that's, I mean, so. So that's, I mean, so the discussion, what was trying to do to separate is, and I don't care, buses down low, vehicles, you know, up the walk, you know, with the bus parking lot or the bus barn is now, or vice versa. But the intent is, is that to avoid pedestrian, you know, vehicles driving by buses. So whenever you have a situation where, you know, a vehicle's gonna pass, you've got an opportunity for a kid to dart in front. And so if you separate a circle or a drop-off for buses and you have a separate circle for vehicles, you know, for parents or pickup. The issue is, is that the space that you have. I mean, you can't go, you know, into the hill and you can't go down, you know, down into the valley. So that's where I'm at. So, you know, the question's like, well, hey, just redo that issue. Well, that issue is, there's a radius associated with turning a bus. You don't wanna ever bring a bus to stop and then back up a bus in front of a school. And so it's, everything is on a radius. And so that's what we discussed when we walked through was, hey, let's attack this from a behavior standpoint before we, you know, start rearranging, you know, parking, traffic flow type of situation. So to clarify, what we had proposed was improvement from the path from the upper lot down, improving that. And then it's a behavior issue and it doesn't matter, either buses up top or buses down below, but you have separate loops, you have separate drop-offs for parents and from buses. And no one, no kid is crossing across those environments. That was the initial solution, what I proposed as far as the side item. You can see it on the screen, kind of what I'm trying to talk about is that the loop to go in front of the school versus the loop that's up to the top, so...
Right, but that's not what he's saying.
Right. And what I'm saying is that I can't do both loops. I can't give you two loops in front of the school.
There's enough loops.
Dean?
Not enough brewery down below.
To do two loops, is what I'm saying.
Even if we took all of those islands out.
If we'd had no parking in front, it doesn't, it's not going to change your radius from around the curve that's existing.
I'm not an engineer, so I understand. It doesn't make, safety-wise, it doesn't make sense to me to have kids up top. And then we're gonna have to ask our staff to go up top in 40 degrees, negative 40 degrees, and it's just a nightmare, in my opinion.
That's the problem, though. You can't have...
The biggest problem is, is it was built in, I mean, you've got a neck and then it doesn't, there's not enough room to do hardly anything.
Yeah, it's almost like a cul-de-sac.
It is, it's terrible.
And I guess if you look at the scale, when she pulls up the picture, you say the distance. I think the pattern, as I understand it now, you know, the intent was with this design, if I can, I don't know.
It's bad.
The outside loop, right? The buses go and then there should be no vehicles that go close to the building, they're supposed to cut off short, right? So you drop your kid off at the back of the bus. So that distance from where you drop off your kid at the back of the bus and you walk all the way around the sidewalk, it's no different than coming down the top of the hill down to this corner of the building. It's not, it's just an elevation change, the same distance.
I beg to differ on that.
That's right.
No, I know, but I'm saying there's, I had sat up at that top and if I wanted to, I could have grabbed any kid. Hey, I got puppies up here, you wanna go see some puppies? I got some candy for you. It's just the truth. And I'm afraid that it's going to get us, it's not safe for the kids. If something happened up there, are we liable? Yeah, we're liable because it was...
Okay, so then you have to give something else. So does that mean the employees can't park them there and they gotta stay up top?
But even so, you still can't fit two loops.
It's almost where you could figure out a way to drop off both sides of the building. You know, and again, I don't know what, you know, the engineering of that, but I mean, that's an ideal is to have, you know, the car riders coming on one side of the building, the bus riders coming on the other side of the building, which would basically be a reworking of the entire exterior of the building. But, I mean, that's, you know, again, that's fantasy world. I realize that that's probably not practical, but...
But what you're describing is what we're proposing, right? So again...
But what I'm saying is like, okay, so if you have the buses, if there was a way to get the buses to go around to the backside where the playground is and drop kids back there and then you have your riders coming into the front of the building, that way you're walking people and your cars aren't interacting and your cars and your buses aren't interacting at that critical exchange of bodies.
Exactly how my last elementary school was, I was thinking. I had a front drop-off for the buses and a complete backdrop-off for the parents.
We don't have that.
So, yeah.
They have to come along this road where I think is the conversation this way, right?
Yeah, and so if there were a way like on the, what is that?
Do you want cars on the playground?
South side of the building.
Do you want cars on the playground?
Like one into the draw.
There's a ditch on one side.
Okay, it's not big story.
That'd be the best thing, it's not big enough.
Sorry.
Everything's too small.
So, like, if there were a way that you could go around, you know, and have something along here, and I don't know what the drop-off is on that side, I don't think it's that extreme, but...
It is.
But, like, yeah, and so that's what I'm saying, it's kind of a fantasy, but like, that's ideally what you want. You know, something where you're on either side of the building.
And what we're saying is if we're trying to have, we're trying to separate bus capacity or...
Yeah, and you can do that in a car drop, but you still are gonna have kids crossing over to those traffic lanes.
It's just a behavior change solution versus a...
Yeah, I don't see, I mean, even looking at doing something on that, I guess, the west, southwest corner, if we were to fill in some of that, there's just, there's still interaction and it's, I mean, there's not, there's no great solution, but it, yeah, it's tough.
So it's that important, what I was saying is if I take away all the stuff from the front and just, it's just literally a radius of a turning bus to avoid a, you know, a six-point turner.
So I think some parent responsibility has to come in here and like leave the staff parking where it is, keep all of that front parking handicap and guest, because you're not gonna have that many guests coming during bus time, leave that the bus loop and parents are required to park on the top and walk their little kids to school. I don't think that's that big of a thing to ask. And I don't think the staff is going to say, well, I'm not gonna stand out there in the cold. They'll take turns to do it, to protect their students, they will. I've been in elementary before, I would stand out there to protect my students. I also think one more step about protecting students is we need a crossing guard on that road that goes across I'm unit there, too, when I'm in tri. There needs to be a crossing guard there.
There are a lot of kids that already utilize that path coming down.
Yeah.
My trial's included.
So, yeah, so I think it really is just a point of having some parent responsibility and saying, like, I think fixing that path, those stairs, dangerous in the winter with ice. They're not wide enough for kids going up and parents coming down, it's not wide enough for that.
And he's got that sleeve down, that's what you...
And everything that's highlighted yellow is to improve that.
Yes.
And so as you're improving it, is it gonna be just a straight, like a straight ramp that's on the stairs?
It's gotta have a code, it's gotta be...
It's gotta be...
It's a ramp.
Because that, because again, and this is coming from the maintenance guys, is it's much easier to plow it if it's...
Needs to be widened for a bobcat.
Yeah, and, yeah, and without steps.
And they, that's the first thing they can...
Yeah.
It really is.
If I remember right.
Nikki.
Honestly, you know, as an elementary staff person, I think if you did just improve that ramp to the top and honestly, if you put some kind of a, like, sheltered thing that whoever the person on duty is, if it's a windy, snowy, rainy day, I can stand under that thing and kind of block whatever, but still fully see everything.
Just when I'm here, what it's like a bus drop-off, like you'd see in a municipality where you have three sides, clear glass, a bench, metal roof, clear glass with a bench, just, you know, you're out of the wind.
It doesn't even need a bench, we can stand, we're good. You know, like, but something that will block the wind, but you can stand out there and...
Makes sense. And we even talked about, and Tyler did too, we...
And take away the parking up.
This could be gone and we could bring that all the way over to here and kinda, you know, make it way shorter.
Yeah, that was part of the thought.
And they shouldn't be able, parents should not be able to park there either, because that cogs it all up. Like, they should have to park in the middle area. That's the issue.
On the curb.
Yeah, when they park on the curb, you can't see your kids going in and out, like, that should be a no parking zone.
Oh, this?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, she's on the bottom, yeah.
No, no, no.
No, no, no.
Yeah, right there.
Yeah. I agree.
And then it also blocks our view of who is getting picked up and dropped off. If it turns into just a lane, then it's much easier.
So you want the lane to be on the outside, not, right? Not, you don't want the parking on the outside, you want the lane to be on the outside, the parking to be in the middle.
Yes.
So you need to restrike the, right, the surface.
So then would you have the parents pull up and be like, okay, Johnny, see you tomorrow. Okay, Suzie, see you tomorrow. Okay.
Yep.
So that way they're handed right off to somebody.
Right.
So that, so whoever that person is standing in our little shelter belt, they can like usher them down the slope.
They can see, yeah.
Yes.
That makes sense.
And then, and then it also will help on those days when we don't have buses and we have to have CPRD pick up our kids, because right now that's a disaster, because there's parents pulling in to pick up kids and there's the CPRD vans that are all pulling in and then we don't know where those kids are going. And if it was just another loop, then they're all forced to stay in that line. Even if someone separates the CPRD vans, we don't know where kids are going.
There's too much room up there for us not to utilize that upper part.
Yeah.
We can, you're right, it's a behavioral thing. We've done it for too long. We've already had, how many bus vehicle collisions?
Yeah.
Well, even cars, parents will pull right in front of you where you're going to park and you wanna let them have it.
So we'll, we'll address this. I agree, take all these parking spots out, move them in.
And make that a link.
There's the loop.
And you go in one way and out another.
You come in here, you go out here, we can work on moving this down.
Yeah.
You'll wanna go, yeah, it'll be, you want your kid on the outside, so you're gonna go counterclockwise. You'll go counterclockwise and your kid will be on the right side of the vehicle and they can get out.
Sure.
Okay, on the passenger side, they get out on the passenger side.
Yeah, because you wanna come in this way then.
Correct, you wanna go that way.
That's why.
Which seems like, I feel like we're coming the opposite way right now anyway.
Well, that's because it's striped that.
It's striped that way in the arrows.
What is the current striping for? It's just primarily...
Just parking.
But it's...
They park their drop-offs.
If there's an event at night, people park up there, or you park up there and wait for your kid to come up after school.
Or you park up there if there's a ton of people at the elementary school and you're driving a big truck because you can't fit a truck in those spaces.
Yeah, those lines need to be replaced, they're too tight.
These are about ten vehicles. Okay. So...
I think that works, I won't pick up these.
You wanna try it?
Student kids.
Or candy, I mean.
Who's gonna drive it?
So again, from a scope standpoint, you've got restriping, you've got a, like a bus stop shelter, you know, for dropping, and then you have an improved ramp that's code compliant, that's wide enough for maintenance to maintain without, you know...
And then do we need signage?
We'll have to, I'm sure, just to make sure everybody's doing it the right way at verbs and then...
And so again, the lower drop-off is for buses, or buses and staff.
Buses and staff.
You probably, sorry, sorry, you probably need a designated sidewalk along that, too, for the walkers that come from those upper neighborhoods to migrants.
We'll, yeah.
And migranters, there's not a sidewalk, they ride through the parking lot and if you're using it for...
It stops up here, we could do something.
Yeah, or just through a painted line, they're really used to that painted line on our sidewalks down below and they know they have to stay on one side of it.
We can make that to where it's...
I think if you put a sidewalk there and you kinda ran it around that curve, that's also gonna take away your issue of people parking there and not being able to see out, so... Okay. And Rob will look at all that.
Makes sense.
Perfect.
Time is...
Um, those were the big items that I was looking for input. If you could go back to the bottom worksheet on the left. Yep, click the on/off. And so if you could scroll to the left, you'll see the, not every one of those, see if you see, not every one of those projects has an X. I tried to, I said red and yellow, I guess, and so, thoughts?
What we discussed.
Yeah.
Stick with it.
Okay.
I think so.
And then as we, you know, we've got these requirements, then we'll kind of tune this pricing, but there'll be some increased price associated with the stadium complex, associated with bathrooms and incorporating that. And then as we, you know, same thing with some of the bathroom finishes and we'll do that.
Is there gonna be, there'll be an increase in price, too, for the pinebutium step, right? For this?
Correct, it'll be a bus stop that's been, I mean, yeah, as we...
A little, building a little shelter.
So then let's talk like a timeline of, you know, hypotheticals, you know, saying, okay, Tyler, you've got more information now, I need you to, you know, put together these numbers so then the school district can coordinate with DA Davidson and kind of, you know, so they can communicate to voters and then when would that vote be? When would implementation start? Is everybody familiar, and I guess it's kind of talks, turns it over to Hope Bridgette is still online, but maybe my time and her time can kinda talk in concert here together, maybe she, if she's still on or...
We had kind of talked about that there is a certain amount of days you have to go before you can run an election, you know? So that at least has to be given, I think it's 90 days, 80 days, 90 days. And so we have talked about potentially August.
I think she's on still, isn't she?
So just to kind of put this in your idea for the timeline, we will have the district basketball tournament for '25, '26, and '26, '27. So, and that's, you know, late February, so we're doing bathrooms. It would be probably really good not to have bathrooms up there going.
What did you say, '26, '27?
Next year, the following year.
'25, '26, and okay.
So you would want them to be completed during the summer of '26? To be, you know, you're basically, you're not gonna be, you're not gonna be ready for the first one, but you'll be ready for the second one.
Yep.
Bridgette's on, dude, if we have...
I would say if everything worked out, I would like to probably go out for a poll on that vote. August.
We have to work backwards, 90 days.
September is the latest we had to. I mean, I have, I'm not saying this in stone. And then this is a question for, is it Bridgette?
Yes.
Um, from Ms. Maline, who wanna know the difference between a mill levy and a bond. So if she could just briefly touch on that, so everybody's on the same page.
Yep. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Well, hi, everyone, I'm Bridget from DA Davidson and I have been for 30 years doing school bond work in Montana. DA Davidson's a full-service investment company, the only one that has, you know, headquarters in Montana and so I cover the state, working with schools and the issuance of bonds. And one of the big things, you know, the reason why you issue bonds is because you can take advantage of tax-exempt rates and the rate on the bond issue is really, you know, reasonable, like for a 20-year term, we just did a Whitefish $30 million bond and the rate was 4%. So what happens with those bond rates is it becomes an investment opportunity, banks and individuals and... Uh, banks and individuals and insurance companies, a number of different types of investors can buy it. And when they buy a bond, it becomes a, uh, tax free, um, there, there's no tax on the interest income that the school would then pay the, the purchasers of the bond. So there's an entire process that we go through. You, you know, to make sure that these are, you know, qualified bonds, that you, you're eligible for tax exempt, which you would be. Um, you know, we've worked through the IRS and we, we have bond counsel help us and there's a lot of, uh, you know, kind of red tape to go through. Um, and that's part of that, you know, the window that you guys just talked about. It's actually about seventy days, but once you kind of count in, you know, you probably want to have a board meeting where you consider the resolution. There's a resolution calling for the bond election that you have to adopt. And typically we see, you know, a school board review it at one meeting and then come back at the next meeting and, and officially adopt it. And that resolution will name really the, the key things that you're talking about tonight, which are, you know, you've got elementary and high school projects and even though you have the same boundaries, um, because of your impact aid, you need to have a separate elementary and high school election. Um, so you would call out the elementary projects and then you would call out the high school projects and you'd put a principal amount to those. And so the principal amount, um, I have some sample numbers. We'll just kind of review. It's always easier to, to look at numbers than just hear the information. But we just have a sample three million dollar elementary and a seven million dollar high school for hypothetical purposes to talk about. And so that would be the key thing in the resolution is calling out the principal amount of the bonds. And then the next thing would be, um, you're going to have taxpayer impacts in the, in the bond, uh, language that will say, you know, for a hundred thousand dollar home and a two hundred thousand dollar home and a three hundred thousand dollar home, for instance, what the impacts would be. And that's a new law. It, it used to only apply for mill levies and now, now they've, um, rolled bonds in as well at the last session. So you just have to have three, uh, comparable numbers. You can do one hundred, three hundred, five hundred. Um, most schools it seems, uh, would do one hundred, two hundred, three hundred, depending on kind of what you think the median value, values are in the district. But, um, so you have those, those numbers and that is what we'll talk about a little bit from my perspective is, um, you know, Tyler and you all are working on what the principal amounts are, but the interest cost, we want to keep that as low as possible so that the, the taxpayer impacts are low. So, um, and one of the things that determines the taxpayer impacts is the term of the bond. So that's another thing that's named, um, you know, the principal amount, the impacts of taxpayers, but part of that would be you would name the term of the bond. So is it going to be paid over, you know, ten years, fifteen years, twenty? You can go all the way out to thirty years. Um, and then, uh, and then just the project description. So you would come up with all the key things you've talked about tonight that you'd want to accomplish so that voters have an idea of what the bond would be. Um, you know, nothing, not too detailed of a exclamation or an explanation that you're, you know, painted in a corner that you have to do all these things, but pretty detailed so that people know what they're voting for. So does anyone have any questions on that general kind of overview? I thought we'd do just a quick ten minute bond one oh one and, and then you guys can answer or ask questions along the way too.
Bridgette, what's the difference between a bond and a mill levy?
Yeah. So, so a bond, um, you're going to just ask for that principal amount. Um, and, and the principal amount would be called out in the election and that's, it's, it's kind of really similar to when you ask for, uh, you know, when you go to the bank on a, on a home loan, you know, you're buying a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar home and you're asking the bank to approve it. And, and so you think about the principal amount and then you're going to owe whatever interest amount is due on the, on the, you know, so whatever, um, over the twenty year term, every year your taxable value is going to change and every year the mill changes. So the nice thing about bond issues is that over time, as your tax base changes, um, you know, maybe you have a bunch of additions, you know, with, with, you know, coal in your district or pipelines. If you have some big new improvements, then everybody's, you know, all the residential property owners have less, um, less, uh, bond. So the bond kind of floats depending on what your tax base does.
Thank you.
And Bridgette, I'll just add to the mill levy is what we'll do the election for in May and that's what goes into your general fund?
Yes.
And that's what pays your salaries.
Yeah.
To keep the buildings going. This money is only for the projects that we're talking about. So that will be laid out on the election, um, form as well. It'll be just the projects there. And that's the only thing that money can be used for. So mill levy totally separate.
Yep.
That makes sense?
And, and sometimes we see, to Brittany's point, sometimes we see the, um, you know, like you have a, you maybe have a building reserve levy and that's kind of a different, that's a different part of your budget. This, the bond is really a specialty and it's a, you know, distinct start and stop. And it, it's really well defined for the voters, you know, it's, uh, we find in Montana that a lot of times bonds are easier to pass than even mill levies because sometimes they don't understand everything that goes into a mill levy. But when you present a bond to them, they say, oh yeah, I know exactly what the, you know, track's going to look like and the, um, you know, the, the parking and the, um, you know, traffic flow and all the things you're talking about. They, they, you really define that and it's pretty specific as to what the bond will cover.
Bridgette, can you go through your hypothetical situation with an elementary of three D and a high school of seven million and go through the one hundred, two hundred, three hundred?
You got, yep. So I'll just stop real quick because it's, could you guys see the screen okay, the, what I have up? Okay. So this is just a one stop is just to say you guys have a, not, you'd already know this. You have a very robust, very strong, uh, tax base. So we'll cover that a little bit here. Um, there's two options in Montana, um, as far as what your debt limit is. And I would say, you know, eighty five percent of schools have to use option one. It's an equalized funding. Um, most schools do not use option two, which is just based on your tax base size. And so this tells us, um, you know, if you were just an average school in Montana, you'd be looking at twenty one million in debt capacity in each district. But because you have such a strong tax base, um, you can issue up to forty one million in each district. So, um, so that kind of covers just that initial, uh, you're going to be obviously well under, we have a lot of schools that get up against these debt limits and it becomes quite an issue. Yours is not. Um, and so if you look at, um, the, the taxpayer impact, this is the three million dollar example. Uh, and I'll blow this up just a little bit here. Um, so in the elementary, so your tax base is the same in each district since the boundaries are the same. Um, and then I have a ten year term, a fifteen year term and a twenty year term, just for example purposes. And so to make these estimated debt service payments based on your current taxable value, um, you'd be levying about nine mills, six mills and five mills, depending on what the term is that you choose. And then the impact would be per hundred thousand dollar home, you know, so if you have a two hundred thousand, it's just double and three hundred thousand triple. And, and so now we have to put all three of these numbers on the, on the ballot itself. But so we would have this information. It would say, um, if we decide over, you know, ten years, it'd be twelve dollars a year or one dollar a month for the ten year, for the fifteen, it'd be nine dollars a year or seventy eight cents a month. And the twenty eight, or the twenty year term would be seven dollars a year or sixty six, um, cents a month, just for kind of those, those numbers, just to compare. And then if you look at the high school, we have just a seven million dollar example. So again, that same concept, you look at what the term is or what the principal amount is, what term we select. And so the range would be anywhere from twenty one mills down to thirteen mills. And so most schools kind of look at, when you're thinking about the projects that you're talking about, what are, what's the average useful life of the, of the projects? Um, is it, does it extend out twenty years or do we already know we're going to have to replace, like you talked about, the, the, maybe, you know, how long will the track surface last? So that would be a consideration. And then also your tax base, you, you know, depending on what's happening, I, we're working on a bond and more, uh, with McKinstry and they're, they're saying, Moore said, geez, we have all these pipelines. Where everything's so robust for us right now. We're worried that maybe the pipelines will go away. They, they decided to go with a shorter term of fifteen years just for that reason. So there's different reasons everybody chooses, you know, just like a home loan, the longer the term, the more interest costs you pay. So you can see, you know, with a ten year term on the seven million, you pay two million over the term. Um, and then on the twenty year, you pay, you know, four million and in between the, is the three million. So you add that interest cost in and it, and it is fact, it, you know, flows into what the mills are going to be.
So Bridgette, question. So there's concern, obviously this is coal strip, coal strip's in the news. So the longer that you have on a term, right?
And Yep.
Is, is the, is the risk? So the short the term and the operating conditions of the, of the plant and the mine, obviously shouldering the, 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 the larger percentage of that. If those go away, then that would fall back onto a, the individual, correct?
That's right. Yep. So that's exactly what you'd want to think about.
So the, the shorter the term, the more security that you have in maintaining the current status quo. The longer term, the more potential that there's, there's a chance for change.
And why the push to get it done now?
So if there is a, um, a, as I understand it, we have, we have three years to use the, the monies, the funds. Um, and, uh, if, if there's a delay in that, um, do we lose that, that money?
No. So what, what happens is at the time you issue the bond, so there's a, you know, if you have the election and, oh, and I was going to mention this, um, that when you're thinking about the election, in, most schools are doing mail ballots just because then most of, most, uh, people get the ballots absentee anyways. And there's probably some advantages depending on what the legislature does, but to have a mail ballot. But, but a lot of schools will pick, um, I don't know when your school start is for next year, but your target market obviously is your parents. And so typically when you look at the summer, although Glendive did pass a bond in August, typically most schools will pick early September so that you, the mail, the ballots go out while, when, when school is already started. So your ballots will go out two to three weeks in advance by state law of the election date. So typically we will say, you know, pick a date where, you know, about, you, you've maybe had enough time to have at least one nice public meeting and maybe put up a board at a couple of football games or, you know, volleyball games and people kind of mill around with maybe some open houses. So then you'll have that happen. You'll have maybe a chance for people to say, oh yeah, that's right. We're, you know, we've heard about this and now we're more familiar. And then you have a public meeting to maybe answer questions and then the ballots go out like that next day. And then if the ballots are out for two weeks, that kind of puts you, you know, maybe toward the end of September, um, just something to consider. Um, but
Political timeline is that, hey, if we have enough design that we can get solidified prices, so then we could go out to the public at the end of the school year in May, then you can hold your election that, that timeframe in September and those windows work out. So that gives me, says, hey, Bush, you got to be done with enough design to give me, you know, the right numbers to go to the public. And then as a board, before the end of this school year, and, and, you know, by Memorial Day, the end of May, generally speaking, you know, in that May meeting, then you're going to pass the language and the resolution that says, hey, this is the scope that we're doing, this is the cost that we're doing. And it's, it's the actual resolution, the language that's going to go out to the voter. And then they have ninety days to kind of process, ask questions. And then that election is, like she's talking about, the beginning of September as, as, as kids come back and it's on people's minds.
Yeah.
Does that seem, Bridgette denied layout that?
Yep. That's a perfect, perfect description. Yep. And you can drip over, you, you know, you can be in contact, send some newsletters out, send some emails out. You can still be, obviously you'll be talking over the summer, but it just, uh, for sure, we always think, yeah, your target market for the school, uh, to be back in session is great. Um, and then I think, what, what was the question? I, I, I got so excited about the timeline. Um, what was the question I was starting to answer?
I was just wondering about the, um, if there are delays. I know that, um, you talked about the three years to spend, but
So it's as long as when we issue the bond. So there's that timeline of having the election. And then there's a sixty day window for voters to contest the election by, by state law. So let's say if your election was the first of September, you'd have all of September for that sixty day and then all of October. So you could issue bonds in, in let's say November. And so three years after November of twenty five, we just have to expect to expend eighty five percent of bond proceeds in three years. And then that's just an expectation based on what you see at the time of issuance. So three years from twenty five would be twenty eight, November of twenty eight, we'd have to do eighty five percent by then as an expectation. But if your expect, if thing, if the facts and circumstances change, there's no, uh, penalty. Um, you know, uh, like a bigger bond issue like, like Laurel did fifty seven million, you know, they have, uh, they're over this fifteen million dollar benchmark where they have to do some extra accounting and there are some things that they have to be mindful of. In your case, each district has its own fifteen million dollar limit. You'll be what they call a small issuer. So you won't have, um, you won't have any kind of ramifications, um, to worry about.
So that allows the flexibility for a phased implementation
Yep.
of future during the summer months. So you're not, you know, trying to jam in everything into a, a certain window. You've got the ability to plan to do things each summer or during, you know, availability.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
So then I pulled, I just pulled up kind of a fifteen year example, just since it was the mid plane. Um, but this is your major taxpayers list, um, and you can just go down to the top fifty. So your top fifty, um, taxpayers are, uh, uh, wait, I can't read the ninety six point five five percent, um, of your tax base. So you, you know, everything that you know, but you can see, you know, Northwestern Energy as twenty five percent and Puget Sound is seventeen percent. Portland General Electric is seventeen and Avista is fifteen. So Pacific Core, you go down. And then, um, you can see when we look at a breakdown of your, uh, tax base here. I think these are all things maybe you've seen, um, before, uh, that, that Brittany's had from us. But the, when you look at Montana taxes and, and the only reason I really want to just quick talk about this is that there is um, some efforts at the legislature where we're looking to have a reduction in the tax rate for, uh, residential property. So that'll, you know, right now your residential property is only three point three eight percent of the entire tax base. So when we go back to those spreadsheets, um, we may have a different, uh, right now the tax rate's one point three five percent for residential property. So, you know, all of, every seventeen class, all the seventeen classes of property have different tax rates. And I did, if you want to really get into the weeds, that's kind of something I've given to, um, to Brittany, it's in this spreadsheet and you can see the tax rates all across here, but the tax rate for residential property may go down. So it's a nice time to be able to give that talking point to people because already we know that your, you know, your major taxpayers are paying, you know, almost ninety eight percent. Um, but the residential property may even go down a little bit more next year when we see, you know, your new values come out. So that would change. So when we, as we're working, as soon as the legislature wraps up, um, I think it's House Bill two thirty one that has this information and there's a couple of others that are moving through. So once that changes, we'll, we'll maybe have a new spreadsheet here. And these impacts may go down even a little bit further. But one thing, we won't have certified values until, uh, the first week of August. So the other advantage, um, for you guys is as we, you know, you have your election in September, we'll be, we'll put these estimates out when you're ready based on the dollar amounts you want to use. And then when the new taxable values are certified, we will have, um, we'll update, uh, these spreadsheets. So you'll have one more chance to say, oh, by the way, you know, before we were saying, you know, the tax impact on the three million elementary was, you know, nine dollars a year. Now it's down to seven fifty a year or something. So we'll have, we'll have, we'll have an update by then.
Okay.
And so, um, and then if you can kind of see, you know, over time, your tax base has changed. So that's what you're really, you know, it, it's dropped from what it once was. Um, and, and so I know, you know, there's just change on the horizon. You just never know. So that'll be one of the things you'll want to get back to me on is, you know, what's the principal amount? Uh, and then what, what terms do we want to use? So as you guys look at the list that you've talked about tonight and you have new numbers, we'll update this three million and we'll update the seven million example two. And Brit, Brittany and I did talk about, and I, she probably relayed, I mean, you guys do have impact aid, a little bit of impact aid that comes in in the elementary and the high school. You are able to, um, issue, you know, impact aid revenue bonds. It's just payable by, from impact aid alone. But you're also able to, if you wanted to, uh, transfer impact aid over to the, um, to the, uh, debt service fund to offset the levies. So maybe you had extra money, extra impact aid. You can always, um, and maybe your tax, something happened to your tax base. You could always use, just so you know, you can always use impact aid to help offset debt, debt service levies. But in your case, you, you won't want to because of your robust tax base.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. You bet. Keep me posted on, uh, everything you, uh, everything you decide and we'll update the numbers.
We will.
Thank you, Bridgette. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
So then I planned to, you know, we'll come back. Maybe, um, you know, in the April board meeting, a little more fine tuned. Maybe some more renderings, a little more design, make sure that we're chills tracking. You know, and then, you know, we'll come to the, the May board meeting and we'll have things that are, you know, more defined and ready for, for resolution and for approval by the board to go out. Is that my plan?
Yeah.
Sounds good.
That works.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Tyler.
Thanks, Tyler.
Okay. With that, 7.01. Calendar. Governance calendar. Or agenda.
So from February, we had to move annual audit report is in March. Is that normal, Brittany?
It just depends on when they get it done and when they get it back to me. And then I do my part. So I had my part done in about two weeks. So I don't know, just depends.
Okay.
I think last year we did it in April.
Okay.
So.
Um, and I think everything else from February got done.
Okay.
And then, um, March, we were talking about coaching volunteers. We don't really ever do that, I guess. Cause if you have some, you just bring them at that time, right?
Yeah.
So I think we can remove that item from the governance calendar if everyone's okay with that.
Yeah.
Okay. Transportation agreements aren't ready yet, right?
Mine, yeah. So I'll have them on Friday for Steve to sign. So yeah, we can bump them to.
The first meeting in April?
Yep.
Okay. When do they have to be done by?
I kind of like to coincide them with the out of district. So if we could kind of do those at the same time, that'd be great. So when I start doing the letters, then I can send out those transportation agreements because then we know what districts we're dealing with.
Okay.
They actually go to the transportation meeting when you go in like June or, yeah. So that's, that's when they have to be done. But this far, like she said with the FP14s, we have to know, we have transportation agreements with these districts before we say they will have to pay for their own transportation. So.
Okay. Let's just keep that with the out of district then. Um, all non-affiliated has been moved to April?
Yeah.
Cause we're still waiting on some evaluations.
Yep.
Okay. And then all tenured or all certified staff has also been moved to April?
Yep.
Okay. And then.
Normally moving it to, or is this like just a review?
Just for this.
Okay, perfect.
Classified is on here, correct? For this one. Okay.
We would like to keep them in March.
Okay, perfect.
I think there's just like some delays on evaluations is what we're waiting on. So.
I just want to make sure we didn't have to do anything.
Next year, if we could just be conscious of that March date, we get all the evaluations in by February and we can keep calendar. Great. Everything else I think was on here.
And just to clarify, we don't bring volunteers to the board at all.
Right. Cause they just fill out that form.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. So we can get rid of, if it's on there anywhere. Cause I think it was for a couple of different sports. We can just take those off.
Okay.
Good.
All right. With that, we'll move on to 9.01. There's a resignation on there for, uh, information purposes only. With that, yes?
I would just like to make one small comment on that, if I may.
Mm-hmm.
Hey, um, Crystal is welcome back at any time. She did a fantastic job for us as a throws coach. And she's given with personal issues and hopefully next year she will be back and we wish her all the best. And really would love to see her back coaching throws.
All right. 9.02. Mr. O.
I will not be bringing this recommendation to the board tonight.
All right, okay. What's that? Move on to 9.03.
Okay, recommending, um, Jack Rozander for district substitute.
I move that the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approves Jack Rozander, district substitute for the 2425 school year.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Any public opinion on this agenda item?
Right, keep up with him.
Right. Uh, any for the board?
Is he classroom substitute or?
Bus. Most, just white buses.
Oh.
Same kind of thing we had, or maybe somebody, yeah.
Great.
Good.
Let's go up and out. Anything else? Wade.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Sabrina.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, uh, 9.04.
I would like to recommend Brian Sullivan for Culture High School Assistant Track Coach for the 2425 school year.
I move that the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approves Brian Sullivan as CHS Assistant Track Coach for the 2425 school year.
Okay.
Okay, motion second. Any public opinion on this, public participation on this agenda item? Need for the board? Wade.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Sabrina.
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Okay, before we start recommending people, can you kind of walk through your evaluation process on coaches? What you look at in those evaluations? Coaching is very emotional for people. Um, so this is the, this is the meeting where we receive the most feedback from individuals. So if you could just kind of walk through that process, when it happens, what you look at.
Okay. So when we, when we look at, when we look at the coaches, we look immediately after the season, we do their, their evaluation, their coaching evaluation. Um, that looks at the season, their performance during the season and what we understand during that time. Um, we look at, you know, did, were they doing well by the kids? Um, were they successful in developing the kids? It's not so much about wins and losses as it is about developing the character of the kids and, and, and being a positive role model and doing what is best for kids in all situations. So, you know, issues of eligibility, behavioral issues. Um, did we have issues with practices? Did we have issues, you know, with, with, with kids interacting with one another? Um, all of that is, is considered in that evaluation. How well they, they mesh with the schoolhouse, they mesh with the ideals that we as a district want to project? And, um, how well they've taken care of district property? You know, are there, you know, is their equipment all turned in, in good shape? Is, did they get all their uniforms back? Um, did they fundraise? So we look at, you know, the total package of the coach. Then, you know, we also consider as, in, in the time between that end of the season and the time of this, you know, sometimes there are things that come to light and we have to consider those things as well. Um, and, and that can sometimes be a, a, a difficult process. So we, we try to do, you know, we, we try to look what's best and see is the coach doing their job? Are they making progress? Um, you know, and do we have community support for the coach and the program moving forward? So those are all major considerations that we take. Um, I, I would like to say that I, I kind of would like to rework the evaluation, the evaluation form. Because as it stands right now, um, we basically have two choices, satisfactory or unsatisfactory. And that I don't think is a fair evaluation of it. We don't do that with our teachers. We, you know, most jobs don't do that with their employees. You know, you have to identify on a scale. And, and I think we need to look at that and that's something that I kind of want to look at, you know, over the summer to pitch rollout for next year. Cause we're in this school year, so it would be fair to judge coaches, you know, based on different rubric. Um, but I think that would also provide us with a more realistic evaluation of where coaches are in their developmental process. You know, so if we have a coach that's been here for one year and they're still learning and, you know, we've, we've had to talk to them about, you know, hey, you need to tighten up the locker room or hey, you need to do this or that. Okay. That's a learning curve. If we have a coach that's been here for a decade and we have problems in the locker room, that's a problem. So, you know, and those are, those are things that we look at.
Okay. And then before this comes to the board, you've reached out to each of these people to see if they would like
Yes.
the position again.
Yes.
Okay. That wasn't happening a few years ago. So people be hired and be blindsided and, okay. All right.
Okay. So, uh, first off for Frank Bratton Middle School, for their head football coach, I would like to recommend Johnny Dilworth as the head football coach there.
I move that the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approves Johnny Dilworth, FBMS Head Football Coach for the 2526 school year.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Any public comment on this agenda item? Need for the board? Wade.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Sabrina.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'd like to recommend Angie Courier for Frank Bratton Middle School Head Volleyball Coach.
I move that the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approves Angie Courier, FBMS Head Volleyball Coach for the 2526 school year.
Angie. Okay, motion second. Any public comment on this? Need for the board? Wade.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Tiff or Sabrina?
Aye.
Aye.
I said aye.
I was looking at you. Something about you stealing kids.
This is true.
I would like to recommend Carrie Kersman for Frank Bratton Middle School Assistant Volleyball Coach.
I move that the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approve Carrie Kersman, FBMS Assistant Volleyball Coach for the 2526 school year.
Second.
As a motion second, any public comment on this? For the board? Wade.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Sabrina.
Aye.
Aye.
And I would like to recommend Malisha Seagull for Frank Bratton Middle School Assistant Volleyball Coach.
I move that the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approves Malisha Seagull, FBMS Assistant Volleyball Coach for the 2526 school year.
Okay.
Okay, motion second. Any public comment on this? For the board? Wade.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Sabrina.
Aye.
Aye.
I would like to recommend Nikki Barrett Moline as Frank Bratton Middle School Head Cross Country Coach.
I move that the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approve Nikki Barrett Moline, FBMS Head Cross Country Coach for the 2526 school year.
Second.
Motion second. Any public comment on this agenda item? Need for the board? Wade.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Sabrina.
Aye.
Aye.
I would also like to recommend Lorraine Hanson for Frank Bratton Middle School Concessions.
I move that the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approves Lorraine Hanson, FBMS Concessions for the 2526 school year.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Any public, extension on this? For the board? Wade.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Sabrina.
Aye.
Aye.
I would like to recommend Owen Heck for Culture High School Head Football Coach.
I move that the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approves Owen Heck, CHS Head Football Coach for the 2526 school year.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion second. Any public opinion on this? Need for the board? Wade.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Sabrina.
Aye.
Aye.
And I would like to recommend Lucas Heck for Culture High School Assistant Football Coach.
I move that the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approve Lucas Heck, CHS Assistant Football Coach for the 2526 school year.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Any public comment on this? Need for the board? Wade.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Sabrina.
Aye.
Aye.
And I would like to, uh, recommend Trent Ashley for Culture High School Assistant Football Coach.
I move that the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approves Trenton Ashley, CHS Assistant Football Coach for the 2526 school year.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Any public comment on this? Need for the board? Wade.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Sabrina.
Aye.
Aye.
And I would like to recommend Nathan Goodluck for Culture High School Assistant Football Coach.
I move that the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approves Nathan Goodluck, CHS Assistant Football Coach for the 2526 school year.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Any public comment on this? Need for the board? Wade.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Sabrina.
Aye.
Aye.
I would like to recommend Sherrell Martin for Culture High School Head Cross Country Coach.
I move that the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approves Sherrell Martin, CHS Head Cross Country Coach for the 2526 school year.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Any public comment on this? Need for the board? Wade.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Sabrina.
Aye.
Aye.
I think we skipped Brian.
Well, he's.
No, I'm sorry. That's, that was correct.
Um, so I would like to recommend Brian Sullivan for Culture High School Assistant Cross Country Coach.
I move that the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approve Brian Sullivan, CHS Assistant Cross Country Coach for the 2526 school year.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Any public comment on this agenda item? Need for the board? Wade.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Sabrina.
Aye.
Aye.
And I would like to recommend Tiana Yates for Culture High School Head Cheer Coach.
All year?
Yes.
I move that the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approve Tiana Yates, CHS Head Cheer Coach for the 2526 school year.
Second.
I have a motion second. Any public comment on this? Need for the board?
I do have it listed on the winter also because they're two separate. So, sorry.
Yeah, they're two contracts. That's right. But she's, she's just doing both. So we can just hire her one time.
Okay.
I think that's what we did last year.
Wade.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Sabrina.
Aye.
Aye.
And I would like to recommend Becca Hopkins for Culture High School Assistant Cheer Coach.
Did that get built into the contract or is that still up in M.O.U.?
That's called.
Until the next negotiation. So it'd be good for next school year still? Okay. I move that Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approve Becca Hopkins, CHS Assistant Cheer Coach for the 2526 school year.
Second.
Motion second. Any public comment on this? Need for the board? Wade.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Sabrina.
Aye.
Aye.
And I would like to recommend Emma Blady as Culture High School Wait Room Manager for Summer and Fall.
I move that the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approves Emma Blady, CHS Wait Room Manager, Summer and Fall for the 2526 school year.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Any public comment on this? Need for the board?
Is there a winter too, or just a summer, fall, spring?
There's, there's summer, fall and, yeah, and I think it's winter, spring.
So she's not all year?
Um, I didn't think that was due yet. I mean, I'm willing to recommend her for all, but I don't think it was due yet.
Okay. Wade.
Aye.
Tiff. Tiff.
Aye.
Nancy.
Aye.
Aye. Or Sabrina?
Aye.
Aye. All right, nine point oh six, winter.
Uh, I would like to recommend John Courier for Frank Bratton Middle School Head Wrestling Coach.
Do you guys want to do these?
You guys have been doing great.
Hey, I have to say, well.
I move that the Colchester Public Schools Board of Trustees approve John Courier, FBMS Head Wrestling Coach for the 25-26 school year.
Second.
Motion second. Any public comment on this? Any further board? Wade.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Sabrina.
Aye.
Aye.
And I would like to recommend Angie Courier for Frank Bratton Middle School Assistant Wrestling Coach.
I move that the Colchester Public Schools Board of Trustees approve Angie Courier, FBMS Assistant Wrestling Coach for the 25-26 school year.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Any public comment on this?
How many girls are involved in wrestling now at middle school or like volleyball here? There were four. Four, okay.
Yeah.
Did you have your hand up on?
No, I was just saying four.
Oh.
Any further board? Wade.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Sabrina.
Aye.
Aye.
And I would like to recommend Leslie Nies as Frank Bratton Middle School Head Boys Basketball Coach.
I'll let you take a motion.
I move to, I move the Colchester Public Schools Board of Trustees approves Leslie, Leslie Nies as the FBMS Head Basketball Boys, Boys Basketball Coach for the 25-26 school year.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion second. Any public comment on this? Any further board? Wade.
Aye.
Tiff.
No.
Angie.
Aye.
Sabrina.
No.
Aye.
And I would like to recommend Jeremy Kill's night for Frank Bratton Middle School Assistant Boys Basketball Coach.
Do I have a motion? Okay. Moving on.
I would like to recommend Taylor Ramsey for Colchester High School Head Wrestling Coach.
I move that the Colchester Public Schools Board of Trustees approve Taylor Ramsey, CHS Head Wrestling Coach for the 25-26 school year.
Second.
I have a motion second. Any public comment on this?
I didn't want to be in a setting to voice, I'm Dana Dinnerman. I didn't want to be in a setting to voice concerns here, but if we don't advocate for our children, who will? We had multiple seasons full of many trials this year, and I think that the board would really benefit from waiting for all concerns and data before making this decision of rehire of all CHS Winter Sports rehires. I was not aware that the public concern form had been done away with. So I am currently in the process of following board recommended policy seventeen hundred, which has been broken by administration with no response and follow-up, and we have coaches up for rehire before the complaint has been completed. I do understand why we have set a calendar date to get such things done in a timely manner, but I don't believe some decisions should be rushed or made before a uniform complaint procedure has been completed. I would like to recommend that the board opens or tables all CHS Winter rehires, rehire decision to a later date.
Anything else? Any further?
When Mr. De Soul mentioned that he takes information from the community regarding coaching rehires, I've been banned from giving feedback. And so I'm very concerned that as a parent, I don't have the right to address things at the lowest level. And so I've not been able to communicate concerns regarding coaches that my minor son has been a little bit original. I'd agree with you. It should be postponed to a later date.
Any other public comment?
I'm Nikki, and I, as an employee of the district and a coach of the district, I also understand how difficult it is to find coaches, and the longer you wait to hire, the more at risk you put us for putting those coaches in a different position. And I honestly think that we need to consider doing it now before coaches look elsewhere to work. Most of our winter sports head coaches already work within the district as educators, meaning they've already followed all background checks, and they already all work with our children every day, day in and day out. They know our students better than anyone else. I do fully believe that we need to move on with this and hire them this evening.
Is there any other public comment? Any further board? Wade.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Sabrina.
Aye.
Aye.
I would like to recommend Gary Ramsey as Colchester High School Assistant Wrestling Coach.
Did you ask him?
Yeah, and he said no.
He has no choice.
I move that the Colchester Public Schools Board of Trustees approve Gary Ramsey, CHS Assistant Wrestling Coach for the 25-26 school year.
Second.
I have a motion second. Any public comment on this? Any further board? Wade.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Sabrina.
Aye.
Aye.
I would like to recommend Dan Valdez as Colchester High School Assistant Wrestling Coach.
I move that the Colchester Public Schools Board of Trustees approves Dan Valdez, CHS Assistant Wrestling Coach for the 25-26 school year.
Second.
I have a motion second. Any public comment on this? Any further board? Wade.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Sabrina.
Aye.
Aye. I'm going to stop you there on my table, uh, uh, the Charette until I am satisfied on that seventeen hundred policy that's been followed through, so, okay.
So do we hold on the system as well? And we'll table that as well.
Okay.
Do you want me to table that?
Please.
I think we need to, if we're gonna, I move to table CHS Winter rehires for CHS Head Girls Basketball Coach and CHS Assistant Girls Basketball Coach until the next meeting?
Next meeting.
Until the next meeting.
A second.
Okay, motion second. Any public comment on this?
Thank you.
Any further board? Wade.
Aye.
Tiff.
No.
Angie.
No.
Sabrina.
No.
Aye.
I move that the Colchester Public Schools Board of Trustees approve Randy Charette, CHS Head Girls Basketball Coach for the 25-26 school year.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Any public comment on this?
Okay, I do want to say something. Okay, I, say your name for the record.
Say your name.
This is Randy Charette. Okay, I just want to say, like, I learned a ton this year. I really did, and I'll get better, I will. And I really do just want to make, like, girls basketball amazing in this community again, like how it used to be. So, building a program, I hope that I can continue to do that in the future, and I'm just, I really am thankful for this job. As much as sometimes it's a pain in my butt, but it, it, like, I love it as much as I do teaching. So, that's all I have to say about that.
Thank you. Any other?
I'm Nikki Barrett Moline. I would also like to say that I think that it's important that we take into consideration the, um, work that is put into working with high schoolers. And, I mean, and middle schoolers in general as well, but it is difficult enough to work with students and to work with kids who are working through a long school day, playing sports, everything else is going on in their life. And then when we have parents interjecting things, so I do think it's important that we also take into consideration, when we're looking at all of these things, that we stay focused on what the job of the coach was, and try not to stray from what is actually happening on the court, in the gyms, in the locker rooms, and really in the buildup of their academics, because they're also students before athletes, so I assume that's important to remember.
Any other comment? Any further board?
What's a, I mean, if, if that's not resolved, if, um, if there's still something outstanding, then how can we take action?
Well, I think if it comes back, that the complaint is validated, then it, then it is what it is. Because even if there's a coach that's hired right now, currently, for track or golf, and something comes, then we're, we have to follow policy if there's something that's validated. So I, I think that you can hire, and if something comes back, then you proceed that way.
Yeah, we'll have to stick, just stick to the policy. Any other question?
All right, I mean, if, if that's, if that's, and I guess I'd have to read through that policy to see what, I mean, what, what policy we're talking about, because I, I don't, and maybe I'll do that real quick.
It's a public complaint.
It is.
It is the seventeen hundred.
But if it, does it say, I guess, does it state in there if, if it is resolved after an action, um, that the action is negated or, or, you know, based on, on whatever the, the outcome is that is?
Well, I think it, it would automatically be negated.
No, it's got to come back to the board.
If there's a, if there's a valid.
If there was something, yes.
And then the board goes into executive session, or is that?
Well, we can't go into, I mean, you, you can't go into executive session about a, let's just use a coach because we're talking about coaches, without that coach being in there. I was dotting my t's, crossing the i's, you know what I mean? Just to make sure we're, um, I was led to believe what we are. I was just citing with caution, but, uh, we have a motion second.
Can I comment something real quick? In a coach's contract, it also says termination of employment. So the district may terminate this contract for cause at any time during the year. Insufficient student participation as determined by the board or the designated shall also constitute good cause for termination of this contract.
So at any point, it can be terminated.
If you have costs.
If you have costs, which would be the policy seventeen hundred complaint, if it came back validated, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I'm satisfied with that.
I'll move to the board. Wade.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Sabrina.
Aye.
Aye. Now we can move on to the system.
Okay. I would like to recommend Emma Blady for Colchester High School Assistant Girls Basketball Coach.
I move that the Colchester Public Schools Board of Trustees approve Emma Blady, CHS Assistant Girls Basketball Coach for the 25-26 school year.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Any public comment on this? Any further board? Dan?
Yeah, just what does cause constitute? Because I've done two policies seventeen hundreds this year, and I can't find where was the person selected necessarily that may be removed.
If there's any illegal activity that could be caused, so if someone uses drugs, like fails a drug test, or if we have reason to believe that they're on drugs and we ask them to, to do a drug test, that is cause, um, cause would be, I don't know, what else would cause?
I kind of Googled it.
Okay.
So like serious misconduct or performance or a violation of company policy or law such as theft, insubordination, or failure to meet job expectations.
And just because a parent files a complaint, doesn't mean it is.
Just cause.
It'll be investigated by the district based on the policies that we have in place, and then that would go forward to the board.
Any further board? Wade.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Sabrina.
Aye.
Aye.
I would like to recommend Dana Strong as Colchester High School Boys Basketball Coach, Head Coach.
I move that the Colchester Public Schools Board of Trustees approves Dana Strong, CHS Boys Basketball Coach for the 25-26 school year.
Second.
I have a motion second. Any public comment on this?
Joe has raised his hand.
Uh, go ahead. Joe?
Yeah, Dana Strong should not be a, a basketball coach or a teacher at Colchester High School or in the state of Montana.
Dan?
My policy seventeen hundred that I wrote, clear back in February, was immediately responded to with a cease and desist letter. And if you look at the policies that were violated on January seventh, this person should not be brought to the table tonight.
Mallory has her hand raised.
Mallory?
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, I can hear you, Mallory.
Okay, perfect. I just want to get on here and just say that I think Dana Strong did a phenomenal job. I think that he has really brought these boys up, um, and I think that we most definitely should, um, recommend him to continue our boys basketball, being our boys basketball coach.
Ultra Portacost three hundreds.
Go ahead.
I would also like to speak on the behalf of Dana Strong. He has been an amazing mentor and brought the boys basketball team, um, together and to, uh, it's a whole, whole new heights and build their confidence up and was an, it was amazing to see the boys all come together like they have, and, uh, we really appreciate him, so I would love to see him come back. Thank you.
We've already talked to Joe.
Okay.
I will, I am Randy Charette. I will say that working with, um, Colchester Dana throughout the season, like, together, I think he is a phenomenal person. Like, he really does just want what's best for kids. And he's a wealth of knowledge, too.
Anything else? Any further board? Wade.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Sabrina.
Aye.
Aye.
And I would like to recommend Trenton Ashley for Colchester High School Assistant Boys Basketball Coach.
I move that the Colchester Public Schools Board of Trustees approves Trenton Ashley, CHS Assistant Boys Basketball Coach for the 25-26 school year.
Okay, motion second. Any public comment on this?
He just moved without even a second.
What?
I said, you're going to. You're so worried about kids and puppies. Just can't even focus.
It's, it's been repetitive. Okay, now I have a second. Any public comment on this? Dan?
Yeah, I recommend this position be open as well.
Okay. Anything else?
I recommend the rehire of him. I think that we also need to consider, oh, it's Nikki. I think we also need to consider that, uh, uh, the, these coaches are working hard for our children, and it's easy for us to sit on the sideline and behind the bench and criticize what they're doing without knowing the ins and outs of what they're doing. And I think that we, as a community, need to start backing our coaches instead of fighting them.
Any further board?
I was going to say Mallory Staples has her hand raised again.
Mallory?
Um, I would just like to back Nikki what she said. I think Trent is phenomenal with these boys, and I absolutely recommend him for rehire, too.
Anything else? Any further board? Any further board?
I can see it. I was gonna say, I don't know if Joe raised his hand again.
Joe?
Yeah, um, we just need to start doing the right thing for the kids. As a basketball coach for twenty-eight years and somebody who has a, a child still in the program, that's just not happening. That's just not what's happening in the program. So I just refute those, those positive comments. That's just not what is happening. It's not the reality.
Audra? Audra, do you have your hand raised?
I would also like to speak on Trent's behalf. He has been great with the boys as well. And like I said, just lit a fire under them. He makes them want to work harder. He makes them want to do better. And he's super passionate about what he's doing and the kids feed off of that and they do, they've done so well with that. And it's just really great to see that spark and see it inspire the kids. So I would absolutely love to see Trent come back as well. Thank you.
Anything else? Any further board? Wade.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Sabrina. Nine point oh seven. Okay. So I've got the recommendations for hire for this year's upcoming twenty-five, twenty-six school year for classified personnel. So I would like to recommend everyone on the list.
So these are rehireds that can only be removed for cause. So we will take them all together. We do coaches separately because they are specific term contracts with no expectation of a rehire the next year. So that's why we do those separately. I move that the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approves the rehire of the classified staff for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year as presented.
Second?
Okay, motion at second. Do I have any public comment on this? Any further board? Wade.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Sabrina?
Thanks for being here.
Absolutely. Board self eval.
This is when you just tell us you're gonna reach out to Deb and she's gonna send us the survey.
So say those exact words.
I'm gonna reach out to Deb and she's gonna send us the survey again. So I think I already reached out to Tony actually.
Okay.
Because I think Deb's kind of stepped out of that position, but I will double check with Tony. Anymore? Nine point oh nine. These are policy. Policies, okay. So we've got our second final reading of policy five, two, two, three on personal conduct. And this is the one that the MTSBA recommended. Kind of get rid of the examples of some of those.
I move that the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approves the second and final reading of policy five, two, two, three, personal conduct.
Second?
Okay, motion second. Any public comment on this policy? Any further board? Wade.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Sabrina.
Aye.
Uh, policy five, three, three, four, vacations. Yep, second reading of this, final reading again.
I move that the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approves the second and final reading of policy five, three, three, four, vacations.
Second?
Okay, motion at second. Any public comment on this agenda item? Any board? Wade.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Sabrina? And policy three, four, one, six. Okay, so just the second and final reading again of the three, four, one, six administering medications to students.
I move that the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approves the second and final reading of policy thirty-four, sixteen, administering medications to students.
Second?
Okay, motion at second. Any public comment on this? Any further board? Wade.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Sabrina? Nine point one two, audit report.
What you've all been waiting for.
So we had our audit back in October. We had a new gal this year. I kind of touched on some of this stuff with you guys, but it went well. We had a weeks, a week worth having her here. And it went really well. And so the first part of this audit that you see is the management's discussion and analysis. And that is something that I, I do that first part. So all of that, you can see our total net position increase. So that's always nice to see. We stayed pretty comparable. There's, there's a chart in there for you guys to look at that is kind of nice because it compares twenty-three to twenty-four. So you guys can see if kind of something jumps out and helps me to, to kind of see that. And it shows all of our, our net position. It shows your revenues for the year, our expenditures. Not, there's not too much to to talk about here unless you guys have some questions. But what's important with the audit is the findings that they have as well that I have to answer to. And this year we had three. And those were, let me get to the letter again. Oh, I have it here. So the first was, I think we already went over this, but I'll go over it again. The invoice that was received in July for services and goods that were in June and that's, no, no. So that was a McKinstry bill that kind of just slid under the radar. So that was in June. We paid for it in July. Normally this is a lot bigger deal because it's out of a budgeted fund. So it makes it look like the district clerk's trying to save money in the general fund by not paying a bill until July. But that's not the case here. This was a miscellaneous federal fund that is not a budgeted fund. So it didn't affect anything that had to do with the TFS or our budgeted fund. So that was good. Still not okay, but could have been worse. The miscellaneous federal fund reconciliation. Kind of was hoping that she would be a little bit nicer, but she wasn't very complimentary. But I was like, it looks a lot better. Like we improved a lot from last year and it just really hasn't been reconciled for years and years. And so it's a lot of work to try to get it. Those beginning balances just right. So it's not awful lot, but that was a finding because it was on the audit last year as well. And then they had a finding for our workers' compensation credit that we have. And that kind of comes from credit that Workers Comp gives us. And it was sitting at about sixty-five thousand dollars. And we hadn't used it yet. And so the auditors dinged us on that by not crediting that back. But Workers Comp is not the easiest to work with. They would not just send us a check. So you have to kind of, we've been creating negative invoices to take care of that. And so we've already implemented that this year. So it's already been taken care of. We have about twenty thousand left of that credit to use. So, and I think that's about, I think that's about it unless you guys have some, some questions on the audit. But I feel like it went really, really good.
I just wanted to say good job.
Thank you. Thank you. That was a hard year to do for our office and and there's a lot of help in it. So there's extracurricular, there's, you know, learner's job. There's like, everybody plays a really big part in that audit. So yeah, kudos to the whole team.
Very good.
Good job. Thanks.
Okay, well, that. We'll move on to our admin report.
No, we have.
I need to approve it. Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, I move that the Colster Public Schools Board of Trustees approves the audit that Paul Strum and the associates conducted for the fiscal year that ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
I can.
Okay, motion at second. Any public comment on this? Any further board? Wade.
Aye.
Tiff.
Aye.
Angie.
Aye.
Sabrina? As we raffles that we have to approve this one, it's like, here it is. Take it or leave it.
You're just ready, you're just ready to move on.
We'll approve it. And it was, the lady was rough, but.
She was interesting.
She did an amazing job. You really did.
Thank you. I had to fight a little bit. She was like, well, this is a finding. I'm like, no, it's not. So.
Good job.
I did have to fight for myself a little bit. So she, she was, she was a new gal. They basically are just down people. Auditors are just short people. And so they pulled somebody that's usually the one in the background that is helping an auditor. And they're like, hey, can you pull this? And she'll help them and pull it. And so then she was sent on our audit. So kudos to her too for putting up the best too. So sort of. Like, just give me a call, come over and pay me something. Can we do the awards at the beginning?
Oh, yeah.
Maybe we should.
Yeah.
Just the student, like the bucket fillers.
Holy Betcha.
Student of the month then.
Sure. You ready for that?
Yeah.
Tyler took over the presentation. So, you know, I totally.
I didn't know if I was gonna be able to stand up for a second. Bucket fillers for February, Teddy Simbrey, Calvin Paul, Jay Seegan, Mala Talawama, Kalani Hart, Alia Colbert, Alexis Gores, and Violet Wolf.
Congratulations to those kiddos.
I heard today that you were the best principal ever. And it may not to have done with an extra recess that was given.
You're not supposed to sell on me.
Structured or unstructured? Your fight works, I know. Get laid.
Clearly, I'm gonna have to stroke there.
The kid's all about you.
You get a feel for what's really going on up there.
Between the dogs and the principal.
The kidnappers and the principal. It's just chaos.
Saw a sheep one day too.
I don't know on that one. I did hear about that. Yeah, that was a great day.
Good learning stuff. Mrs. Ulta, did you have any recognitions you wanted to?
I sure do. Yes. I have a lot of them actually. So thanks for getting back to that. I can start with just the, the regular ones for the student of the week and student of the month. So we have Tyler Stevens, Jason Maline, Tyler Stevens again, twice. Clarence Kills Knight, Lexi Malin, Camden Link, Shelby Patton, Ben Hosner, John Burns, Knox Becker, Triton Schindler, Pierce Manley, Keegan Angel, Leila Onefeather, Cedar Shoulderblade, Jasmine Gutierrez, Lucian Onebear, and Grady Goyette. And then for the month of February, we had Jasmine Gutierrez as the student of the month. We had Lexi Malon as a seventh grader. And then Cedar Shoulderblade was the eighth grader. So lots of good things there. I just also wanted to make another comment too on the accomplishments or recognition too. So we had a special guest today that came in from Forsyth. And had an assembly for one of our teachers, Shauna C. Cunningham, who received the Montana Masonic Foundation's educational grant. And so he, along with Jack Rosander, then came to the building because they're, they're masons and they presented this award in front of our student body, which was really neat. And I was kind of afraid at first that maybe Shauna C. knew, but then she really didn't. So it was fun to celebrate with that. But she did receive the grant of nine hundred and twenty dollars, which she's going to be using in the library area with a lot of the different iPads that she's going to supply and stuff because of journalism class and things. So that was pretty neat and pretty special for that. Along with my board report, I don't know if we're there or not yet, but I have some recognitions if you want me to mention those now or? Yes? Okay. So I just thought it was pretty special, some of the things that happened with the academic Olympics. And I feel that it needs to be said, you know, instead of just being in the comments there. But our team went to the academic Olympics and it's really special for us because I think it's thirteen years later that we actually have the trophy, the plaque back again with Frank Ratten Middle School. So thirteen years ago, we had it. And then of course, it's been many years prior to that. And, you know, as a Frank Ratten Middle School teacher. But very special to be able to congratulate the following students. And that's Kimberly Arnison, Jonathan Stewart, Ariel Burcheck, Christina Nina Watson, and William Wolfe. And the alternates were Cooper Clark and Chase Maline. But even more special too for them bringing home the trophy is the individual recognitions that they had while they were there. Presented themselves well and brought home a lot of different special things too. The Colstrip team was of course Kimberly Jonathan, Ariel, Nina, William, Cooper, and Chaseen. And they won first in the oral rounds. They received a gold medal and then they brought home the trophy. Cooper Clark as a sixth grader, he placed Nina Watson took ninth as a sixth grader. Chase Maline then placed fifth. Kimberly Arnison and both Jonathan Stewart placed first, winning the gold medal. And then of course, the plaque themselves too. So very special round of applause for them. Just lots of great things that's happening down there with our students. We also had National Junior Honor Society inductions, which I think that's a special recognition as well. We had new members that were here. They were Eli Colbert, one of my sixth graders, Cooper Clark, Bernie Barr, Kenya Sherman, Cashlyn Scalp Kane, Britton Steer, Annabella Kyle, Emma Pavlik, Nina Watson, Nivea Vander Sloot, Logan Patton, and Brianna Whitman. So that, that takes a lot, as you know, to be able to achieve that accomplishment as well. Speaking of the science club, that's a little bit different area though. Moving into that, they just had a, a nice tour when they went down to the Northwest College, Sharon Powell. And so they, they did a lot of different things there, but they brought home really good information. They wanted to share it. We also have some other things that's, that's happening with the recognition. But I just felt that it was real important to bring those to attention. Thank you.
Good job, kids. Is she on? Robin?
I am.
Are you ready?
Okay, for our attendance competition, the sophomores won, juniors were second, freshmen third, seniors came in last. February Students of the Month freshman was Jacob Rogers, sophomore Cameron Kersman, junior Macy Sherman, senior Lucy Kemmer. Our February Rosewood County Health Be a Buddy, Not a Bully winner was Katie Wilcox. For FFA, we have eleven students who are qualified to go to state for five different contests. And I'll have their specific names and contests for the next meeting. We had three teams participate in academic Olympics. Team A placed second in oral and fourth in written. And Team C placed second in written. Individual student awards, freshman Peyton Beatty won fourth, sophomores Bran Maline won first. Tristan Schouse also, they tied for first. Juniors Jenna Beatty won third, Kyla Kersman fifth, seniors Slade Toscano third, Devon Verlanic fourth, and Katie Wilcox fifth. And I'd just like to thank Mrs. Dennehy for her time and for taking them. And I also wanted to recognize the FCC LA chapter. They started a freezer dinner project. And they've been making freezer casseroles for members in our community, whether illness, some things happen in their family, whatever, they've been providing those just to take some stress off. And they've also gotten several grants to help pay for that. So they're doing a great job. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Jen, the recognitions.
We could recognize Jen for filling in and covering a lot of things while I've been gone. I appreciate Sheehan, Tom, and Scott all for covering.
Uh, Mr. Kirchner, anything you'd like to add to your report? Hope it's all in there.
Gonna follow Jen's lead, no.
All right. I might throw one. Okay. Yeah, I did get one written. Been sick and dealing with a lot of things. But I did want a kind of a recognition on my own here for these guys. One of the big things that was due this past month that I worked on was accreditation report that it submitted actually a day early, which is great. So I had help from everybody. Just, it was great. I ended up having Mr. Kirchner come over with different things that he's in charge of. Being first year, still having it like a pro, knew the answers to the questions from curriculum to assessments to just a number of things. So I got a lot of different help. I know, um, Robin headed up, uh, the graduate profile, um, got that done. I know Wendy helped her and some other folks. So just a good team effort from the admin team to get accreditation submitted and on time and early. So that was pretty cool. Been doing a lot with the calendar, so gonna wrap that up real soon. Um, let's see, I've been taking classes. I know Mr. Bissold and I are a little tired today because four hours for me and five for him last night. Um, and then just, uh, working two, couple different admin meetings, uh, working mostly for preparations for hires, rehires, all that kind of stuff, and looking at next year. And, um, been meeting with each person quite a bit, quite often. All the directors either meet, uh, once a week or once every other week. So been getting a lot of good, I think, relationship building going on and understanding of what's going on in schools and, you know, how I can help them. So it's been a really good month.
Good.
Cause I've been gone. I've been out. It's your back. It's over. And with that?
Thank you.